J.J., before I hit the gavel, is it possible for you to just email with trustee Phoenix and make sure if he's having any technical difficulties that we resolve that secondarily? Okay. All right, everyone. It is 11:10 a.m. on this Tuesday, June 10th, 2025. Work session of the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees. Clerk Woodley, can you please do roll call?
Yes, Madam President. Trustee Hall?
Present.
Vice President Mayberry?
Here.
Trustee Nicolet? Absent. Trustee Phoenix? I know he'll be joining. President Smith?
Here.
Trustee Westlake?
Here.
And Clerk Woodley here. Five present and two unaccounted for, Madam Chair.
Very good. I believe trustee Phoenix is trying to join, so when he does, we will welcome him and state a time for the record. Same if and when trustee Nicolet joins, we'll make sure to state a time for the record. All right, that closes item 1.02 and brings us now to item 1.03. And we always appreciate our school police so very much. And the person I am looking at right now is someone that we all appreciate very much as well. So Deputy Chief Shawna Baker, will you please lead us in the pledge?
And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
J.J., I have a message from trustee Phoenix who is unsure of the link to join. Could we possibly try to connect him with that? All right, that closes item 1.03 and we move on now to item 1.04, our land acknowledgement. Every community owes its existence vitality and vitality to generations from around the world who contributed their hopes, dreams, and energy to making the history that led to this moment. Some were brought here against their will. Some were drawn to leave their distant homes in the hope of a better life, and some have lived on this land for more generations than can be counted. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connection across all barriers of heritage and difference. We begin this effort to acknowledge what has been buried by honoring the truth. We acknowledge that some of our educational structures are situated in the traditional homelands of the Washu, Washo, Nupmu, Northern Paiute, Niwi, Western Shoshone, and Nuhwu, Southern Paiute peoples. We pay respect to their elders, past and pleasant. These lands continue to be a gathering place for indigenous peoples, and we recognize their deep connections to these places. We extend our appreciation for the opportunity to live and learn in their territory. Thank you. That closes section one in its entirety, and we move on now to our main section for today. Section two are items for presentation, discussion, information, and/or action. And we have one under this section, item 2.01. All right, buckle up while I read this. The presentation and discussion on results of the 2025 legislative session, possible action to approve budget changes in the following areas for the fiscal year FY 2025-26 budget. One, school police staffing. Two, strategic plan FY 25 budget proposals. Three, athletic transportation fees. And four, review of vacant positions in contract manuals and possible action interventions from board requested, including: One, the process for how allocations are provided for each school year. Two, mid-year allocations. Three, how special education students are calculated in both special education and general education settings and count day. Four, achieving district-wide class ratios across all K-3 classrooms. Five, reducing the ending fund balance from 12%. Six, compensation of student teachers. Seven, and compensation hours and benefits of aides and assistants in special education, general education, and English language programs. This is an item for possible action, and we have our fantastic duo, our Chief Financial Officer Mark Mathers and our Budget Director Jeff Bazo. Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you very much, Madam President, trustees. As the agenda item would indicate, we have a lot to go through. So the purpose of today's meeting, as you know, the local governments are allowed 30 days after the end of a regular legislative session to amend their budget. You took action to approve the final budget, May 27th. But now, having seen the final K-12 funding bill and at least some of the bills being either signed or vetoed, we're now in a better position to kind of finalize the budget. So we have until technically July 2nd to do that, which means two more board meetings, including this one, to make final decisions. And so we bring to you today, hoping for decisions in the following areas, where we've provided previous analysis for board requests or budget recommendations that you've gone to this point. We're bringing to you a few more additional concepts for savings to further whittle down our deficit. And then that would leave us with a conversation about the ending fund balance and potentially using part of that to provide bridge funding into fiscal year '27.
CFO Mathers, really quick, just so that we have a bit of clarity on this. It could be possible that the board would arrive at a final budget, and then in the next meeting, it would just be an administrative step of approving it to submit to the state. But we could conclude all of the decision-making, and we would just have one other step to file it, right later this month?
That's right. That would actually be our preference. If we could try to make decisions here today, this morning, and then we'll bring back the actual final document for you to see and for the trustees to sign on the 24th, but it would be more, yeah, ministerial at that point. But if you need more discussion on the 24th, that is possible. So our agenda looks very much like it has the last few times. You know, the difference here today, of course, is now it's going to go back behind the rail more for deliberation by you. We've kind of reached that point where we've exhausted nearly every opportunity to save money. Got a few more, but basically, we want to turn it over to you for decisions about allocations and other issues you've asked us about. And so to start, like we have the last several meetings, we'll give you an update on what's been happening with the state. Before we do that, though, we wanted to kind of step back and give you a little bit of context. We kind of live in the moment and sometimes forget kind of where we've been and where we need to go. So this slide provides a little bit more history for you to consider. This tracks Washo's base per pupil funding since the implementation of a new school funding formula that we know as the Pupil-Centered Funding Plan. And so that new funding formula took effect July 1 of 2021. And so for the first biennium under that, you can see we were sitting at $7,222 per pupil. We received the lowest amount per pupil of any district in the state. We were below Clark. Part of that reason, or the main reason for that, was the state used a cost-of-living, cost-of-wages index that penalized Washo, didn't, in our view, accurately reflect the cost of living and housing in Washo. So we sat in the low 7,000s. And you know, kind of the unwritten kind of idea here in this slide too is Washo is nearly completely dependent on state funding for our budget. And so we kind of live or die based on what we receive from the state. So we started at $7,222 per pupil. Then in the current biennium, again, we've talked about how we saw this tremendous increase in sales taxes due to federal stimulus dollars that were injected into the economy post-COVID, which no one expected, and that allowed Washington to make tremendous investments in its system. We addressed much-needed backlog compensation needs of our employees. So we were able to provide initial 14% COLA in year one, 2% in year two, and then SB 231 monies were added onto that to provide, again, a much-needed, long-needed kind of catch-up to wages for our teachers and other employees.
Just wanted to welcome trustee Nicolet, so that the record could show she has joined us. Thank you so much.
So we increased nearly $2,000 during the current biennium from $7318 to a little over $9,200 per pupil in the current biennium. We also used, in addition to compensation increases, a significant sum to increase positions here to provide greater support to our students. So we increased, we added or preserved 242 additional positions in the budget several years ago that you'll remember. You know, again, a significant investment for Nevada and certainly for Washo. And so that was the setting for entering into the next biennium, which is what the legislature has considered for the last 120 days. And so you can see, the proposal here is to only increase our per pupil funding by $3 per student from the current $9,705 per pupil to $9,708. from the current $9,705 per pupil to $9,708, and then going up less than $80 next biennium. So I think an unsaid theme here, but I think it's coming more to light is, you know, our challenge faced with the very flat funding shown in this chart and the next slide is really to preserve and maintain those investments we've made in the current biennium. If we can do that, we will have succeeded, in my view. And so it's kind of a defensive mode that we're in, but that, again, is a reflection of the fact of the very limited funding increases we're receiving. And again, Washo is almost completely dependent on state funding for its budget. There's a little sliver of local funding that we receive, but very, very little. And so the legislature was able to finalize its business in the regular session, no special session. The primary vehicle to provide funding for school districts came in SB 500, the K-12 funding bill. And this slide shows you that for nearly every major line of revenue we receive, we received exactly 0% or nearly 0%. So base per pupil funding, we talked about, went up $3 per pupil, basically 0.3%. Everything else here is either a catch-up to what we've already spent in the current biennium, or again, very flat. So after you consider inflation on an inflation-adjusted basis, this really is a cut in our resources. So we face inflation, both in terms of employees receiving a step increase, health insurance increases, PERS increases. And then, of course, we see inflation when we bid for goods and services. The $3 per pupil obviously doesn't cover any of those inflationary increases. So we're, again, financially kind of taking a step backwards based on that level of non-support from the state. And again, we've reported to you the status of legislation. Here, again, we're kind of in a holding pattern on many of these bills that sit with the governor, and we're waiting either signature or veto. But there has been some action on bills. I'll skip the first row here. SB 410 was vetoed. We've got, just checking this morning, SB 177 was signed by the governor, as was SB 115, signed by the governor. So we'll be analyzing those to kind of firm up our needs there. The dollar amounts reflected our fiscal note that we provided. So for EL teacher stipends, we likely would cover that with EL funding and so forth. So that's some of the post-session analysis we'll go through. Yes.
So for item, for SB 314, the social worker per school, that was passed, but we don't know if it's been signed or not.
Actually, that's a correction. That did not pass.
Oh, okay. Thank you for that, because I know we've been working so hard to get. And by the way, I love the idea of having social workers for every school. But when I see a $7.6 million price tag, when we're, we've been fighting tooth and nail to get the budget down, the budget's been higher, going back and forth, I looked at that and I went, oh, my gosh, could we possibly be going in the hole by another $7.6 million? All right, thank you so much.
Yeah, it passed the Senate, but evidently not the Assembly. Do you want us to hold our questions? Okay.
No, no, we should have the conversation now, team, because we're going to have our dialogue now. We'll go to public comment, and this is what, meeting eight of eight so far? I mean, we've been having all these conversations, so I think we'll be ready to start making decisions.
Okay, all right, thank you, Madam President. If you're going to touch on this, Ms. Mathers, I'll wait. But I was going to ask you about AB 398, particularly the $5,000 bonuses for hard-to-reach, hard-to-fill positions. Do we know how much we're going to get of that? We, we don't. So AB 398 was Speaker Jaeger's bill that took some twists and turns near the end. We were able to amend one little section that was problematic for us, so thank you to the Speaker for that. But it does provide $45 million statewide for incentives that are not quantified for title school teachers. So these are contained to teachers. Title school teachers with certain levels of vacancies based on whether elementary, middle, or high school. And then the areas of special ed, math, science, and English language arts, when a district's declared a critical labor shortage like we have for all of those areas. So for both title teachers in schools with a certain minimum level of vacancies, they would be eligible to receive an incentive as well as these areas indicated here. I think this will operate a lot like Senate Bill 231 in that the state will gather how many positions, based on the criteria in the bill, would be eligible for the incentive. And then my guess is then they will allocate the monies out to each district based on their parata share of those employees. And then I'm thinking we'll have to manage and calculate what that incentive amount is. That's a guess, based on how AB 398 is written and based how SB 231 has worked.
So, so short answer is nothing unknown right now, and that, that new money, that, that's not in the budget now?
That's correct. This is additive. This is, this is the good news out of the legislative session, at least financially. One piece of really good news, $45 million a year is a significant sum. If we get 10% of that, that'll, that's a large sum to distribute to eligible employees. But, yeah, again, we don't know how much per employee that would really be.
Later this month, perhaps? When do we meet again?
I think that would probably be kind of early. I remember SB 231, there were various guidance memos that went out from Legislative Council Bureau, and it, it probably took four to six months for the state to design the program and collect that information, so.
Thank you.
That's right. Yeah, but it's, it's coming, and that's, and that, it is great news. It is not budgeted in our budget. This would basically be a grant program.
CFO Mathers, I believe we might have, not yet? Okay, he thinks he's on. So, all right.
Hello?
Hello, we can hear you, Trustee Phoenix.
All right, I'm on, thank you.
Welcome. All right, let the record show, 11:28 a.m. We have Trustee Phoenix joining us online as well. Thank you so much, and apologies for the interruptions with that.
Yeah, no, that's okay. So that concludes the overview of what's happened over the last two weeks in Carson. At this point, we'd now turn it over to four concepts we want to bring to you to, again, either revisit an issue that you deferred to action on or to bring up additional ideas to, again, shave the deficit down. And so I'm joined by Deputy Chief Baker. First issue we wanted to re-raise to you, because, again, there was no vote on this, was the concept of a freeze on unfilled vacant school police officer positions. So I'm going to turn to Deputy Chief Baker, and I'll fill in as necessary.
President Smith, Superintendent Ernst, distinguished members of the board, Deputy Chief Shawna Baker, for the record. I know that you have seen this slide in the past, but I wanted to bring specific emphasis to our increase in safety based on our increased hiring that we have had and our campus supervisors. It is an additional adult on our, on our campus keeping our children safe and in class. If you could move to the next one. Thank you. Again, this is an overview of our current staffing. This will show where our campus officers, we have a dedicated campus officer on every high school, where our middle school campus officers were to be, our patrol, and our additional rovers that we have included in this year, because I know there have been some concerns regarding the Sparks area. So I wanted to ensure that everyone has a clear understanding. As we've broken down the middle school staffing, I have added an additional officer to the Sparks area to ensure that those schools have additional coverage. And for more specificity on what our middle school staffing is going to look like, for what our current staffing is, should we move to assist in the budget deficit and remove the four officers that are currently unfilled positions? We have coverage for Cold Springs, a dedicated middle school officer, and O'Brien, Desert Skies in Sky Ranch, Billinghurst in Clayton, Swope in Turning Point, Pine and Bond. And then specifically, again, back to our Dilworth area, I have moved how our Sparks High School patrol officer goes to other areas. And so now they would just be sharing, just like the middle school beats, they're sharing the high school and a middle school. So just like Cold Springs and O'Brien would share one officer, Sparks High School and Dilworth will be sharing one officer. Incline Middle School has a dedicated patrol officer who serves all three schools in that area. Men Dive Middle School is doing something similar in the sense that they're sharing with Reed High School and Men Dive. We do that based on proximity and call volume. So if I were to change how Sparks Middle School, I've now moved it to HUG High School Patrol, just based on proximity. So if I have an officer at Sparks High School, it will take them longer to respond to Sparks Middle School than it does HUG High School. So very specifically, that's why we have made those changes, to ensure that they have advanced coverage in a meaningful timeframe and can be there more frequently. DePoli will be shared with Damani High School Patrol, and hers with Galena High School Patrol. Again, that's based on proximity and response time. And then Shaw, based on proximity to the high school, will be shared with Spanish Springs High School Patrol. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you, President Smith. Promise I will not lose my mind again. I'm looking for clarification on a couple of things. So I know we did talk about the campus monitors, so I would like to hear what their training is, because to my knowledge, they are not trained in post-tactics. They are not armed. They, what classes have they taken to diffuse issues, I guess, is what I'm looking for? And I'm just going to be quite honest, because when I see the campus monitors, they're basically just shooing kids to class and telling them not to go out of doors. So from my own knowledge, I would like to know if there's something more they've been trained in, because they are in a position, it was stated, to keep our kids safe. So I kind of would like to know that. And then what exactly does the middle school coverage plan look at? Because I would just like to state, I, I just think we're doing our officers and our campuses a disservice if every time students see an officer, it's because something's gone down. I mean, is there anything built in here where they're actually, like Officer Brown? I see him in the halls at Reed High School, high-fiving the kids and talking to the kids. Is there going to be some kind of positive experience planned out for our middle schools? So they're just not seeing an officer when things are going wrong? Is, is there going to be a positive reinforced experience for our middle schools?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for that question. So as it pertains to the campus monitors, they are considered an additional layer of safety for eyes on. So in the sense of working for school PD, they are not trained by us, no. They're considered more of an administrative role. And just like an administrator on a campus, they are there to build relationships and work with the kids on safety in getting them back into class. That is one of their primary roles. However, it is not to intervene in a police function. That is not what they were designed for. So just like any administrator on a campus, they have a radio to then contact school police in the event that police intervention is needed. But it is an additional adult with eyes on who know our children and can speak to those things. So it has been an increase of safety for us in that sense. And this design for the middle schools is meant exactly for, for what you're saying, right? That we have more positive experiences, we have officers on those campuses engaging with the students on a daily basis, not just when there is an issue occurring at the school. That's the specific design. And then more specifically for your area, I know you had some level of concern for that. I have added an additional officer who will be bouncing back and forth between all of those schools to be making contact with our students. Yes, ma'am? Absolutely.
And thank you, interim Chief Baker. I really appreciate that. And do want to make sure I go on record to, again, reinforce that our campus supervisors definitely do a lot more than just shoe kids back to class. They build relationships, they add an additional layer of safety in our buildings, and our high school principals will tell you that they are essential staff members. So I just want to make sure I go on record to make sure that campus supervisors are definitely doing a lot more than shooing kids back to class.
Sorry, and that was for my knowledge too, because when I go into a school, I'm generally there for like half an hour. Sometimes it's not even during passing. And so I have a very limited view. So I did preface it saying, for my gaining my knowledge, what, what exactly are they doing? And so that's the only way I'm going to learn, is by asking those questions. Because what I see may not be the whole picture. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
And then I just want to bring attention to, in my last year as the deputy chief, we have had historical hiring numbers, so I have brought on an additional seven officers. So there has been no sacrifice to the safety, actually. We are more highly staffed than we have ever been in the history of school PD. And so we have addressed these concerns based on that. We have more staff to keep our, our community safe.
JJ, before, Clerk Woodley, would you mind going back a couple slides to, I think it's nine?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. I was going to ask exactly where in my mind. Thank you. Chief Baker, this is a lot of good information. I feel good looking at these slides, but more importantly, this slide, I think your first slide, I just want to bring to everyone's attention, if you see the highlighted in yellow, we're talking about six years FY fiscal year '19 till today, fiscal year '25, an increase of 93% of total police and staff, safety staff, directly supporting schools, from 41 to 79 positions. And within those numbers, as you delineated here on the bottom right, we had a 37% increase in police officers and a 245% increase in campus supervisors. And that, those are significant numbers.
Yes, sir.
Very, very significant, and I really appreciate it. I don't think I've ever seen that type of increase of any type of safety in whether my 10 years in the military or 27 years working adjacent law enforcement. I've never seen that amount of increase, ever. So I feel that we're in good hands with those kind of numbers. So we really appreciate it, and it just shows for everyone who has been hiding under a rock that we have been very dedicated to the safety of our schools and our staff and our children. And that's something that's been a priority for us as a board, and also I know for you and your team. So we really appreciate it, and we look forward, because this is, we're not stopping. We're going to come back, and we're going to keep going. Each and every year, we plan on having this discussion, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, President Smith. I just have a question about our elementary schools, and I just want to make sure. So I, I'm assuming that you're kind of doing those feeders, like you said, the closest school. So just in, in this decision that, that you're, that we're being asked to make, do, do you feel that the, that the elementary schools will have sufficient coverage as well? I know that there's not as many, you know, police, school police issues at elementary schools, but they still, they still need the support of, of safety personnel, and they're not mentioned here. So I just wanted to kind of understand how they're involved in the patrol, how the relationships are being built at elementary schools, how, how does that work?
Yes, ma'am. So in, in our design, we're, we're kind of broken down into what we call beats or areas of responsibility. So in those feeders, that patrol officer does visit the elementary schools multiple times a week. It's part of our, our responsibilities, and so they are out there building those relationships. There's no sacrifice to the elementary schools
Okay, great.
in, in any sense in that way.
Great. And I, and I think that's so great that we have such great vertical alignment with our schools, so then they build that relationship at the elementary, and then when they get to middle, they're like, oh, I already know that person. That they're, they're trusted adults, and I can go to them, so that's great. I just wanted to confirm that we were including elementaries. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, Deputy Chief Baker, thank you for your presentation, your service, and, and for stepping up. Hate to see our chief depart, but appreciate your leadership too. I think one piece sometimes that's, that's missing is, is as important as our police officers are, you have a lot of, you have a lot of support. You have other agencies that come to support us. We've done some amazing things at our schools in terms of providing single-point access. I think all of our high schools here in, in the next year or two will have a single-point access. I think it was an area I wish we would have worked a little quicker on. It wasn't. It is what it is, certainly not a reflection of police. We have those push-button centrics.
Centrics.
Thank you, cards. It's been a lot of, our newer schools are hardened. You know, I think we've, we've done some, some fencing, you know, certainly there's some improvement for some of our fences, I think. But in totality of what we've done, our schools are safe. And as a parent who is transitioning to a former parent of And as a parent who is transitioning to a former parent of the school district, I know I got it out of my throat. It is, it's something that's on the minds of all moms and dads when they drop their kids off or when they watch them drive away on a school bus, is the safety and the security of our students. Because if they're not safe, they can't learn. And so, security, I know, just listening to everybody, having conversations with my colleagues, as important as academics are, safety and security is right there with it. And our schools are safe. Would we like to have 50 more officers? Absolutely. But that doesn't mean that the complement we have is unsafe. As you stated earlier, it's the most amount of police officers we've ever had in this district. And I hope that's the big takeaway. So thank you for your, for your work and I certainly support the direction that we're moving. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Safety's fleeting, right? One moment it's safe and the next minute it's some chaos. Coming from someone who served as an appointee, 2016, when the HUG incident occurred. And every incident that happens from something that horrific to minor things, like a BB gun in an elementary school, we learn something new every, every single incident. It's a constant. It's not like, wow, we're here, we got this. And I will tell you, thank you, Trustee Woodley, for pointing out that golden part up there because it truly is golden, the growth, the intentional and systematic growth that has happened, and it doesn't happen overnight, as we know, has really been monumental. As someone who's been on 11 ride-alongs, police ride-alongs, I've seen everything from, gosh, this is boring, to, oh my gosh, we're in a school that's now in a lockdown. Everything is locked down and I got to see how principals and teachers and our police and our emergency manager came to help us. So I can absolutely say without doubt, and someone who championed our campus supervisors and always will, they are pivotal. I have seen relationships built because they're constant. They're there every day. And it's just been a wonderful thing to see, the many layers of what we know and continue to learn about community policing because we are a community and we have our, we have our schools and we have our families and we have our surrounding communities. And I am very proud to be a trustee that has Washoe County School District Police Department. We are amazing and continuing to do so.
Thank you, ma'am. We're lucky to have you.
And I think we also have Trustee Phoenix on the line as well, too.
Yes, just a caveat, everyone's input, I like the fact that you did cover down Chief Baker on the elementary school, so that was noted. And that also with the staff, that you're working with the staff on those monitors and that, you know, we're still collaborating, working together on that. I really think that's important. And it is great to see that, you know, the police has grown 93% over the years. It'll continue to grow. And, you know, as a former police officer and a military police guy, you know, I can see that we're really doing a good job here as far as having our police officers present and being available for any critical incident. And thank you for arraigning that and explaining that detail to how you have them all staffed for the quickest response as much as possible. So thank you, Chief Baker.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, we'll move on to the review of strategic plan FY '25 budget proposals. The first item here is a proposed reduction to the fifth grade success plans and post-graduation plans totaling $35,000. And working with departments here, these were identified as just one-time cost to implement these. Now that those have been implemented, we can make the reduction for $35,000. And then the next item here, parent-teacher home visits. In the strategic plan, the goal was to increase these home visits. We've increased them from 1,700 to over 2,100 in the last year. The department believes that they can maintain this level of parent-teacher home visits, at the same time reduce the budget by $65,000. So if approved today, this total of $100,000 on this slide would be applied to the FY ' '26 budget deficit. Next is a review of concurrent enrollment fees. So the purpose of this was to provide more access to opportunities for all students. And the waiving of the fees has resulted in more non-free and reduced lunch students completing these courses. So the proposal from staff today is to keep all concurrent enrollment courses free for free and reduced lunch students. And non-FRL students would receive a 50% discount on their first concurrent enrollment class per semester. And they would pay the full cost for any additional concurrent enrollment course in that semester. This proposed recommendation would result in savings of $259,000. If it were to be approved, it wouldn't be applied to the FY '26 deficit. We would apply it in FY '27. Students have already signed up for courses for next year, so we don't want to mess with what their plans were for the upcoming school year. And then on the next slide here, just showing that this would impact an average of around 716 students per semester.
Mr. Baz, so to the team, under our agenda item where you see the presentation listed, there's also our questions for the work session, if anybody wants to look at those questions. So something that I asked for in the question period that is in this answer has to do with other options that we have for this. JJ, would it be possible to go one slide back to 13? And just so the board and the public knows, so the proposal here, which, and I agree, so I absolutely agree that we need to take a look at the fees that we've covered and maybe find a way that is more of a middle road. So the first point of clarification is that this is a plan exclusively for concurrent enrollment and not the fees that we're covering for advanced placement IB. Could you just take a moment and just clarify those two things?
Yeah, so that is correct, that this would just impact the concurrent enrollment fees and it would not impact the AP IB or CTE fees that were in the plan.
Okay, very good. Thank you for that. So in the questions, and if the public is following along, you can also see what I'm referencing. If you look at our agenda and you see where we have the presentations posted, you'll see something that's BOT questions. But I asked for two other scenarios. The first is no cost for free and reduced lunch students, which I agree with, that's the same. And then it would be, the first course would be free for all other students and then a 50% discount for any additional classes. And then the other scenario is again the same with no cost for students who qualify for free and reduced lunch, first course free for all other students and then no discount for additional classes. And each of those scenarios change the savings either to $70,000 or $141,000. I know we're going to have further discussion, we'll hear public comment. But I am in favor of the second scenario here, which is no cost for free and reduced lunch students, first course free for all students per semester and then no discount for additional classes. The reason why I appreciate the answer for this and I want to pose this to my colleagues is free and reduced lunch is definitely the right mark because it's a mechanism we already have in place. The issue with it is that it's such abject poverty. I mean, it is a remarkable level of poverty to qualify for free and reduced lunch. It's not what most people think. So families that make just over this amount can still be struggling significantly. And I want to make sure to still capture those students, or really all students. And so I do think that a reasonable evolution from our current approach, which is paying for all classes for everyone, would be to provide one class per semester for each student and then no discounts beyond that. If they want to take more, I understand they would have those costs to bear, but at least each student would at least get one class per semester. I know that brings the savings down, but I think that's a reasonable stepping point for all families because again, that free and reduced lunch limit is so desperately low that we would be, I believe, missing a very large portion of our community that still would not be able to achieve these classes even with a 50% discount. And I just want to make sure that those kids still have an opportunity to take a class of this rigor while they're in high school. So again, we'll come back to that. It's not a time to make a decision because that's for later. But I did just wanted to pose to my colleagues that that second scenario I asked for, I asked for, is what I'm advocating for our consideration. Vice President Mayberry.
Thank you. I do have a question on this. I'll touch on this. I do want to go back briefly to the home visits, too, real quick. But I appreciate President Smith's comment on the concurrent enrollment. My perspective is a little different. Because I believe that seeing it firsthand, seeing how it's impacted families, my concern is eliminating it entirely for those that may have the means. Because particularly in this time of falling enrollment, I think it's a real selling point to this district. I would, I personally would hate to eliminate any of the fees for the concurrent classes. As we see our enrollment declining, as we see some, you know, call it homeschooling, charter schools, private schools, this is, for students to graduate that have college credits already is a real selling point. And I think it would help create demand and perhaps even at least help us maintain, to some degree, the student enrollment we have. So, you know, when I read it, I frankly was concerned and that's the path I would prefer to go down, is not touching this particular program. Thank you.
Well, I would say you have my attention with that. So if, if the board chose to make a change, my request would be at least the one class free. But I'll be very honest with you, Vice President Mayberry, I like your idea better. When we get to that point, you know, we'll see if this is something, you know, that we do or don't want to do. But I certainly like where you're going with that, too.
Thank you. Thank you for that. I appreciate that. And then the family visits, the home visits, would that, would that prevent us from, with the funding levels that you have proposed, would that, would that prevent us from expanding the program?
I'll have to phone a friend from the audience. Dr. Lamarcas, thank you.
And we welcome Dr. Lamarcas.
Thank you for the record, Paul Lamarcas, Chief Student Services Officer. It will allow us to maintain the increases we've already made and probably to house some slight increases, but it will cut into stipends. So large increases beyond where we're at would not be achievable in the next biennium.
I appreciate that direct response. Thank you.
Thank you, President Smith. Since paying for the credits, that wouldn't happen to help us this year. I just want to throw in, maybe we just leave it alone since it's not going to do anything for this year and then address it next year if we have to, if we would have to.
Well, and we can't. So this board, we review our budget every year and we absolutely can. The one caveat is remember that any, any board in the future that would decide something on this, it would leapfrog over a year because we wouldn't be able to implement it the next year, it would be the year after. And that's because students are already filling classes and we're planning that. But you are exactly right. This is a suggestion, if we decide we just want to hold on this, we absolutely can. The team has brought some thoughtful options for us. And if we decide that this is something we want to pause on, we would just come back to it in future years.
Okay, thank you. So moving on to the next item, is a review of our athletic transportation fees. If you recall, at the last meeting, we discussed raising facility use fees based on custodian wage increases over the last several years. This is a similar idea due to bus driver salary changes. But the last time we raised the athletic transportation fees for students was in fiscal year 19, from $5 to, I'm sorry, from $5 to $10 for middle school students and $35 to $50 for high school students. You know, over the last few years, our average cost for athletic transportation is just under $1 million and we're only recouping $230,000 in the fees. So the general fund is subsidizing athletic transportation by $757,000 per year. So the ideas here are, again, similar to the facility use fee increases, is increasing the fee by 20% to account for recent cost of living adjustments that bus drivers have received over the last several years. And then the other option is, in addition to the 20% that bus drivers have received, their wages were increased by 25% several years ago for the critical shortage compensation adjustments when we were having the bus driver shortage. That would, if we include that, it would lead to a 45% increase in these fees. So this table here shows what those fees would change. The 20% increase, middle school fees would increase from $10 to $12, while high school fees would increase $50 to $60. And the general fund revenue impact there would be $46,000, which would be applied to the general fund budget deficit. The increase of 45% would result in a general fund revenue impact of $103,000. And then also noted here is if we were to fully recover the fees for athletic transportation, high school would have to increase 384% to $192 per student and 587% to $59 per student for middle school.
Thank you. I have two questions. The first one, I know I asked in the trustee opportunity to ask questions and it just wasn't quite clear to me. So the first question is, do other clubs and organizations, extracurricular activity organizations within Washoe County School District, when they go within the district or outside of the district for an activity, are those students/families charged a fee to be transported? The second question is, and really more importantly, what was the input from coaches and principals, their sense of how this could positively or negatively impact the activities for athletics if we increase fees?
Yeah, I'll have to phone a friend on this one. Perfect, all right, thank you. Two, excellent.
It is almost afternoon. Good morning, Sky Lee, Transportation Director. So for other fees, they're usually collected, we build the school directly. The school is, this is for like a regular field trip, let's say downtown or something like that. There are fees for the students, the parents are billed essentially, field trip fees. So they collect that amount and then we invoice that way.
Is it a 100%, 100%? It costs $5, we're going to charge $5? And then to include, that's like during school time, if there's a debate team from a high school that goes to Winnebago for a debate, how does that look as far as transportation and fees?
Debate is billed much like athletics. As far as what the school is charging, we provide an estimate of what that's going to cost and give that to the school. So they can create that fee based off the number of students that they have going to that program. So maybe it's a $5, maybe it's $10 a student. We're not involved directly in that. We're just giving them an overall estimate of what it costs and then a final invoice.
So the activity aside, athletics or debate, the school pays for the debate team to travel within a budget that they have. The athletics do not. I know I didn't ask that question properly. What I'm trying to get at is, my old term, skin in the game, why are we just identifying identifying athletic transportation and increase of fees rather than across the board transportation of our students to extracurricular activities?
Athletics comes right out of the general funds. Others will come from either parent collected fees for special field trips or through grants. Also, we do a fair amount of grants billing. There's billing associated with foster transport as well. So, but athletics specifically comes from the general funds.
Thank you. That was very helpful. Appreciate it, Scott.
Oh, I wanted to add on to what Dr. Nicolet was saying. I think maybe, I think this is what I'm getting from what she's saying is, we're subsidizing athletics out of the general fund, but no other activities in the schools are being subsidized, and the families are having to pay for that. Is that what, I don't know if that's what she was getting at, but that's kind of what I'm hearing, right?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
Before I jump in, just to clarify, is that accurate, Dr. Nicolet?
I think you, my colleague, asked the question more eloquently than I.
No, you led up to it, and clarified my thoughts. Thank you.
Good team effort.
Yeah, and I think it's great conversation, so thanks to you both. And then, of course, as we do in so many different areas of education, families that might have a difficult time coming up with some of these additional funds, there's always ways in which schools work to support families.
Thank you, President Smith. I appreciate what Superintendent Ernst just said, because in all the years that my boys played high school sports, and I think it's subsidized also because they're traveling a lot usually, more than like a debate or any other activity. I mean, they're on the road going to other fields. But in working, in assisting, the varsity coach is always in charge for football, and then he has his athletic secretary. So in helping them for wrestling or for football, helping them collect fees from the parents, some of these parents, it is hard. We were always having to pull money out of the athletic fund to help these students who wanted to play these sports. They have to raise money for their jerseys, and if they can't raise the money for the jerseys, then that comes out of the athletic fund. It is, I'm just concerned that we're going to cut the cord for some students, that this is a lifeline for them to be involved in sports and clubs and things like that. Some of these parents just don't have it. They don't have the $10 to $12 or $50 to $60. They weren't able to even come up with the minimal fees at the time when I was helping, when my boys were in high school. So that's just my two cents. Thank you.
Yeah. Well, and I think the superintendent helped answer that. Like, for example, my son in middle school, he wrestled, and I saw right there on the athletic fee that if that cost, I think it was $10 for last year, was an issue, it was very clear that you could go and speak to the school, and they had a fund of money to help. So we always have that. Very, very important.
But if, they only have so much money, too. So if they're helping kids with their jersey costs, their singlet cost, if the fee goes up for transportation, then it's going to have to come out of that, and there's only so much of a pot for that, too.
Yeah, no, I understand. I think trustee Nicolet and trustee Hall both brought up really good points, that it appears by and large, other groups are paying their way, and this is a really significant subsidy. If I remember correctly, the way that it is right now, it's nearly a million dollar subsidy that we're doing right now. So I do understand that, but having seen the process in my own kids' schools, I know that there is money available to help those families. I will also say that I think it's a little cleaner to do the 50%. That would raise the fees from $10 to 15 and 50 to 75. It keeps the quarters out of the equation. As much as I like the 45, I think people just like round numbers. So I believe this is a conversation we should have year over year in budget, and I am personally a proponent of a clean change to the 50%. So again, we just have a round 15, a 10 and a 5, and 75, and call it a day, knowing that we are still subsidizing this to the tune of well over $600,000. Now, we're not here to make money, and we are here to provide a service, but on some level, we have to acknowledge what the fee schedule should really be. So that's my two cents. Again, we'll have public comment, but I recommend we just do a clean 50, a 50%, not $50. Dr. Lamarcas?
Hi. Thank you for the record, Paul Lamarcas. Roland Stallworth, our Director of Athletics, he's teaching right now, part of our professional learning for teachers. That's why he's not here. We spoke about this. We don't believe any student will be turned away because of an inability to pay. You're right, there's always a finite budget, and so people have to remain within budget, but we don't, we think we can absorb these increases. I will also say with clubs and activities, remember you provided slot pay. So teachers who are sponsoring those clubs and activities are receiving compensation for their work. So there is general fund that is supporting those activities.
Thank you so much.
Can I, sorry, can I just clarify one quick thing? So thank you, Dr. Lamarcas, on what you said about the slot pay. And so I appreciate that our coaches and our teachers doing activities are getting paid, but what I think what we were trying to say is that the activity itself is being subsidized, whereas debate and, you know, a robotics tournament are not being subsidized out of the general fund. And that was, we were just calling attention to it. But I love that we have ensured that the adults in the situation are getting paid, but those families that go to a robotics tournament, they're going to Vegas, they're going all over the place, and they're paying for the full amount, and we're not subsidizing that. So I think that's a conversation we can have another time because that is not what is agendized today, so I'm not going to go on that. But I just wanted to bring it up and make that point. That was all I was trying to do. Thank you.
All right. The next piece here are additional levels of review in FY '26. The first being a review of non-school-based vacant positions. The idea here is two parts. One is to evaluate placement for any employees that could be overaged into a vacant position where grants have been ending, and also evaluate the continued need for a position. The other item here is review of new or contract renewals based on the criteria listed on this slide. Again, reviewing the need for contracts. In both these areas, if something is deemed no longer being needed, that could result in general fund savings, which would be applied to the deficit as well. So if these items were approved as presented today, that would knock $603,000 off the budget, or the general fund budget deficit, bringing it down to $2.1 million. And then this last section here at the bottom would be showing what the deficit would be if we applied the concurrent enrollment to, I'm sorry, any other question?
No, go ahead. The arrows, they're not really with the $603,000, right? Should it be, it's the number right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry. We most likely had an adjustment.
Because you may be really excited there for a second.
Yeah, sorry. The $2.1 million should be the green arrow pointing to the sentence on the right, and then the orange, or maybe red, from the 1.8 million. All right. There's no further questions. We'll move on to the next section, which is the discussion of the board requests. So the first couple areas here will be about allocations. You've seen this slide before. There's a lot that goes into allocation decisions. It can be a very complicated process. But in order to help with that process and smooth it out, you requested certain analysis, one of those being adjustments to the spring and summer allocation process. So currently, once a school reaches 90% enrollment confirmation percentage, and there are 10 students over the trigger point for a new allocation for two consecutive weeks, then we release the allocation to the school so that they have time to fill it ahead of school starting. Based on our review, we would recommend changing that 10-student parameter down to seven, which would result in more allocations being triggered ahead of school, but also at the same time minimizing overages at count day.
President Smith, thank you. So reducing to seven students, how many schools would that possibly impact?
That's a, that's a good question. So it's hard to put a number on it because it changes every year. The answer would be more, which I know isn't like a precise number. And I, yeah, it's, I really don't like giving that answer.
Now, wait a minute. Do you have a degree in this?
Yeah. I mean, it, so I can provide one example, and that's the enrollment snapshot for this week for the upcoming school year. There's two schools that would be triggering at the 10, and there would be two more that would trigger at the 7. But enrollment's fluctuating throughout the spring and summer, so there will be more of that come through. I just can't put a precise number on that for you today.
Well, and I can't either, but a best guess, 20% of our elementary schools?
No, because most of the grade levels at our elementary schools don't change when they get to count day. We hand out probably five to 10 allocations each summer typically. So let's say maybe 10 to 20, but it really just depends on each school's enrollment situation and then how that fluctuates throughout the summer. I'm sorry, I can't be more precise on that one.
That's okay. That's because you like precise. I get it.
I do.
I like this staff recommendation because the 10 over the trigger has been a really high bar to hit. We know it's been a pain point, and so even in a situation where we have very little money, I appreciate and applaud staff for coming forward with an intentionality to make it better. And so I think a 30% reduction is very welcome, particularly in these budgetary realities. So I think this is great that we're making a good faith effort on this.
Thank you. And I do want to point out, this is something that we review every single year, the entire allocations process, to see what kind of positive changes we can make to address school needs, but also being a fiscally responsible at the same time. So, you know, our work doesn't stop here. It'll continue as we go on and refine the process. So the, I'm sorry.
Sorry. The second star, I think one of the issues with a lot of the teachers that I spoke with, it was the trigger, the 10. That was, that was a hot seat. The other was, it seemed like there wasn't review happening all along the way. It was like so spread out that by the time that it was reviewed, there was no, no help, you know, in sight. So that's new, isn't it? The every two weeks reviewing, is that new?
So in the spring/summer side, no. We've, for years, it's like five or six years, we've had a regular, regular rhythm to reviewing these things to address it before school starts. The second section, the frequency for mid-year allocations, that is new. We haven't seen a need in most years to trigger mid-year allocations. This last year, we were developing criteria, which is why there was the gap in evaluating the need. But now that we have that criteria, this would be new to have every two weeks reviewing that from October through November.
I think that will be amazing. I think that would be really appreciated by the teachers because what seems like not a long time for us is a heck of a long time for a teacher that's sitting and like, where's the help? Where, you know? So I think that would be really appreciated. So thank you for that.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you for the question. And then, Mr. Baso, I think you may be getting into this, but it might connect pretty well to the discussion right now about triggering the allocations. It's also accurate that when our class numbers go well below the threshold throughout the year, that we don't take those allocations away. So these are additional allocations that are provided, but even though we true up on count day and the class sizes might be well under later in the year, we don't pull allocations at that point, correct?
Superintendent Ernst, that is correct.
Thank you.
All right. So we'll move on to the next piece here, how self-contained students are counted in general at allocations. If you recall from a few months back, the way the self-contained students are counted in the calculation is they're, 75% of that student is backed out of the equation with the idea that they're spending 75% of their time in self-contained classroom. And so what we get to is a net enrollment that's used for the allocation calculation. The most effective way to address this would be to, in increments of that .75. So this table here are various options for changing that part of the equation in .25 increments down to zero. As you can see here, there's additional cost to it. And then also, in a few slides, we'll circle back to an option we can explore that would address this as well.
I'm so sorry to keep interrupting, but I think this, this really has to be clarified because if there's still some confusion, only 25% is being counted. Because when you, the way you say it, what people are visualizing, what I'm seeing right here, is, oh, 75%. And sometimes when you say 75%, that's what is being heard. But only 25% of a special education child is being counted when they push in.
For the general, for the general education class, that's correct.
Yes. So only 25%, not 75%, 25%.
Yes, of the self-contained students.
Okay. Okay, so.
So for example, let's say a general education teacher, okay, I'm going to take a shot at this. Let's say a general education teacher has four special education children that push in. They would only have one student count towards their class size numbers for triggering an allocation.
That's correct.
And that, so that's the 25% of the four is the one. And, and, because you see it in red, it sounds like the team has some thoughtful concepts that they're interested in exploring in the future with this in a future slide.
Yes, that is correct. Thank you. So the next part here is elementary class sizes. This is going to go through a few slides. But one of the requests was to look at reducing the maximum class size in kindergarten through third grade to what the current average class size was. In those grade levels, that would have resulted in 146 new teacher positions at $14.6 million. Based on our current deficit, that's just not feasible. We also presented this table at a previous meeting of, you know, different class size options you could consider at these grade levels, and the cost impact, and then the number of teacher impact that would happen if you chose one of these options here. Continuing the class size conversation, this year, we piloted preserving allocations at one and two starter schools at count day, where they otherwise would have lost that general ed teacher due to lower enrollment. This left some class sizes as low as 12 students at some of our elementary schools and carried a cost of $3 million. So this wasn't permanently funded. It was funded out of a general fund contingency account because it was a pilot program. We didn't know the cost. You know, this enrollment fluctuates year to year and can come on different size of what we projected or right on what we projected. So, you know, this, the cost- So, you know, this, the cost of doing this could vary greatly from year to year.
So this is where I want to jump in, and this is also going to be a little bit of a preview, we're almost to the end of this presentation, we've had lots of good discussion, we'll go to public comment. Then what we're going to have to do is go back and line item these and then take individual votes. Now, on something that we don't want to adopt, or we don't want to change from the status quo, we don't have to vote on it, because that just stays the way that it is. It's only if we want to choose among options, or we want to implement a recommendation, we're going to do a line item vote, and then one vote at the end that captures everything. My question for this is, and maybe it's also for legal counsel, this was a one-year pilot. If we don't vote to continue it, it just stops, right? So it would not actually require action because it was a one-year pilot, and you have it called out here that this was paid out of the contingency account. So if we were to enact this in future years, it would actually have to be funded out of the general fund and then would further the deficit, correct? Because this is different than the reduction in fourth and fifth grades in one and two-star schools, they were funded differently. I, because I just want to make sure, like, for example, if this is a pilot that's ending, we don't have to take any action, the pilot just concludes, but we would have to take action if we want to continue it.
Yeah, I think that's right, because as you say, if we want to continue it, there's a, if, if we wanted to make this permanent, as much as anything can be permanent, then we would have to find funding. And three million may be the low end of the range of scenarios we could see. So as long as there's some kind of understanding, which I think there would be, that we wouldn't continue this and, and, right? I think we, we don't need an action on it. So, yeah, I'm agreeing with you.
Okay, because, because what we'll do, team, is we'll go through, and we'll clarify this every single time, so not, not moving on this just simply means we did the pilot and the pilot concludes. If we want to continue it, we would also have to allocate budget for it, and I think that's very similar to the next item we're going to talk about as well, because that is already built into permanent funding, so leaving it be means it just keeps going the way that it is. But we'll, we'll walk through this, every single item, so that there's total clarity on the action we're either taking or, or passing on, for that matter.
President Smith, really appreciate the clarifications, thank you. Additionally, just to clarify, I see FY twenty-five, and it is a pilot, and so this would go into effect that the pilot is being removed for next year, and the allocations that have gone out already reflect that, correct?
So the, the allocations that have gone out for next year have been reset to projected enrollment. So anything that was kept whole at count day would have dropped off, and we start over with the new set of allocations based on projected enrollment.
Okay, greatly appreciate all the work that's going into this, thank you.
And this is great, this is exactly what we're supposed to do with pilots, everyone. This is why we try things, we refine, we come back to them, this is exactly why we have the process that we have.
Thank you. We did say we would come back with academic performance data in this area, and thank you to our research and evaluation team for their work here. But just to summarize at a very high level, the results by grade level where these allocations were kept whole were very mixed. The, the next item here are the fourth and fifth grade class sizes, so as President Smith referred to, this was the, the permanent approval as part of the strategic plan last year to reduce the one and two-star, fourth and fifth grade class sizes to a max class size of thirty. If we wanted to expand this to three-star schools, the cost would be six hundred thousand dollars, but if you chose to reverse this, the savings would be one point six million dollars. And again, on the academic performance data, what was shown was that the one and two-star schools showed positive results, outperforming the three to five-star schools, although direct causality can't be determined here. I hope I, I hope I said that right for the, the data folks.
Yeah, and in this case, we already have this funded, this has already been embedded into our funding model. I, I do believe that there's causation between lower class sizes and academic performance. Since we already have this in the general fund, I, I hope we leave it be, because we need to continue to reduce or balance class sizes wherever we can, and we already took this step. So thank you for making sure that this was already embedded in the general fund.
Thank you. So now we'll circle back in a, in a moment to the, the self-contained student count, but some other ideas regarding class size here that we could explore further would be to level kindergarten through third grade class sizes. So right now, kindergarten has a max class size of twenty-five, first and second grade have max class sizes of twenty, and third grade has a max class size of twenty-four point five students. The first option listed here, listed here would be to reduce, or I'm sorry, not reduce, change the class size in all grade levels to twenty-two students. That results in an overall net change of no net cost and no new teacher positions. At the same time, there's no savings and no deletions either. The other option here would be leveling the all four grade levels at twenty-three students per classroom, and then at the elementary school level, eliminating the self-contained factor, so that all of the self-contained students are counted as one student in the calculation rather than the twenty-five percent. So these aren't options we could implement in the next school year, just because of timing, we've already handed out allocations. So since we have time to make this decision, if you want us to explore this further, we could, and come back with stakeholder input in preparation of potential implementation for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year.
Thank you. I, both are a vast improvement. I mean, I spend most of my time in kindergarten classes, I mean, that's, I love, I love kindergarten and I love middle school, and honestly, I can't tell the difference between the two, even though the one's a little, is bigger. They, they're just the mentality, if we get it right in kindergarten, where the foundation is being laid, and the teacher has more hands-on with those kindergartners, and working on behaviors, and getting them into an experience of what the expectation is for a classroom, and them getting their alphabets down, and their numbers down, and their colors, and their sight words, everything is going to flow out of that smoother. I, I, I will say that's what my belief is, having sat for hours in kindergarten classes, when it is just helter-skelter, running amok, there's not a lot of hands-on getting to the nitty-gritties. So getting our kindergarten classes down is, is just a must for us to lay that foundation. And for the life of me, I just can't, I can't stand by where a child is only counted as twenty-five percent, or fifty percent, or seventy-five percent. A child is whole and should be counted as such, and a teacher should be allowed to ha, be able to count that child as a whole, because when they are in that classroom, even if it is for five minutes, they are getting her full attention, and they are being addressed just as the rest of the class is. So I have to say, I, I love the, I love the first one, but I love the second one even more. Thank you.
Thank you very much for putting the options together. I think there's a lot that we want to all collectively notice, and that is that these impacts, these budget cuts, are getting down to the student level, and they are impacting academics. If you look at the areas that are being cut, it's really the academic areas, and we all know really that's our primary cause and focus. And so I wanted to just take a moment to just make sure that we see that really the cuts are all in the academ, mostly in the academic spaces. The second thing that I want to note is that these are proposals, these are ideas, these, these have to be explored in collaboration with many others. When you look at decreasing class sizes in two grades and increasing class sizes in two other grades, we certainly want to collaborate with our Teachers Association, and we want to make sure that these are things that we're all in agreement about. This is really just a proposal for us to begin exploring this as a possibility. But there's really just a lot to think about as far as what we can see with current budget cuts, potential budget cuts in the future, and the, the impact on the academic space in Washoe County School District.
Thank you for that. I really like this smooth-out idea, and, and I, I wish we could do it sooner rather than later, and yet Superintendent Ernst, I agree, there has to be more input on this as to how that would look. I, I do want, if, if you could make a clarification, because I'm one of those that was a little confused by the seventy-five percent, twenty-five percent. So it's a, the child is a hundred percent, there's, it's a whole, a whole. And one of the, hmm, is my understanding right or wrong that the one, these twenty-five percent comes out of the general education fund, our, our general fund, these seventy-five percent comes out of that special education fund? There's like, we're using, we're using two funds to make a whole, or am I wrong?
So, so for the special ed self-contained classroom, those students are all counted as one, one student for the purpose of calculating and providing the special education teacher and the assistant that comes along with that program. Historically, what we've seen is that the self-contained students spend a majority of their day in the self-contained classrooms, and this is on average, students have unique situations, and they may spend more time in a general ed setting than the self-contained. But to, to recognize that average on the general education side, that the twenty-five percent is to recognize that the student is spending most of their day in another classroom and pushing in as needed into the general ed setting. I hope that clarifies that, what you're asking.
Yeah, because it's not where the funding comes from for the child, it's how that child's presence is considered in each of the classroom settings that they're in.
Correct.
Yeah, so again, going back to the example, of course, we're just keeping it easy for the four, and, and we know there are teachers that have four special education children pushing in, spending some degree of their days there, but for their class size, they only get credit, if you will, for one, even though they have three other students that they're also servicing, because it's only the twenty-five percent. Each of those four children contribute twenty-five percent towards their class size. So with that said, I love this second option, and I really love hearing the commitment to collaboration that I'm hearing from the superintendent. We really have to get moving. Trustee Wesley.
I just wanted, it needs to be said, when a child pushes in, that teacher, the expectation is that teacher has lesson planned and has prepared for that child. She's not just planning for twenty-five percent of a child.
For sure, and I can see in the staff's proposal for discussion that they are really hearing our intentionality around the, the whole child, absolutely.
The next item here, moving past allocations, this table here summarizes the various ideas that were listed for aid and assistance compensation at the last meeting. Anything that would be approved in this area would result in, in increasing the, the general fund budget deficit. And then finally here, same idea with student-teacher compensation, if anything were to be approved in this area, it would result in a larger general fund budget deficit. So that wraps up the board analysis section, and I'll hand it back to Mark for next steps.
Thank you, Jeff. So just real quickly, again, we are looking for decisions today, we'd like to pin everything down in terms of fiscal year twenty-six proposals, for twenty-seven, I guess, we have time to come back on those. You know, we've made, just to, you know, for the benefit of the public and for those watching, we've made significant improvements to our fiscal situation during the course of this process. We're actually looking at a one point eight four million dollar deficit by June tenth, that was an old number, if, but, but that number can move based on decisions here today. But again, going from nearly a ten million dollar deficit down to two in a matter of four months is, is, you know, an accomplishment. We're balancing a number of different factors here. As I said, kind of an unstated kind of theme to the budget process is preserving and maintaining what we were given in the current biennium and the investments that we've made, and, and we can see the value and the outcomes of those investments. So we absolutely don't want to take those away. Obviously, there's still a continued need to retain our employees, so employee compensation remains a strong value, I know, of this board and the organization. And then what we've seen in this budget cycle is our human resources department and our superintendent leading a review of, of the organizations here that, you know, in the central office, that will position us for the future, that'll, that are really transformational, that'll set us up in the future well. On the other side of the fence, we know, you know, we're challenged to make changes, you know, and, and make our system sustainable, fiscally sustainable. And that's, you know, what we're facing is not just state funding cuts on an inflation-adjusted basis, but obviously, at a federal level, we're concerned about possible future changes to funding, and so that's top of mind for us. And of course, we're also facing decreasing enrollment. So we're trying to package all of this together. I think our board has done a tremendous job in evaluating, deliberating on these ideas, but this is now front and center in terms of your decisions this morning, or this afternoon, as we weigh these different kind of countervailing values. So when we think about where we stand, we've talked about the fund balance, which in English, you could, you could consider it your savings account, your reserves, your cash. We do have a board policy that almost directly applies to the situation here, that does allow the board to use fund balance when there is, and I highlighted it, a change in economic or political conditions. I'll let you be the judge of which of those two things or both apply here, but I think it's absolutely legitimate, given the work done, to use fund balance as a source of bridge funding at this point. The alternative would be to consider some fairly massive changes to the system just two months before the start of school, and then we might have further ideas for the fiscal year twenty-seven budget process that we would come to you. And so what we're recommending here, proposing here, is to stop, based on the recommendations that you've heard, get your decisions on those recommendations, build those into the final amended budget, and then pause, so that we can bring ideas for both fiscal year twenty-six that we're working on and fiscal year twenty-seven, package them together versus giving you recommendations on a piecemeal basis to, to make further changes to the system. I think it's appropriate just to stop here, consider the recommendations of today, we'll package the final amended budget, and then we'll come back to you in the fall with further analysis, as you've directed and as we've discussed before. I think that absolutely makes sense. I know fiscal responsibility is important to this district and this board, and has been for many years. This is a little bit of a departure, but I just wanted to convey as the CFO, I'm comfortable where we're at with these recommendations, we are still operating in a very fiscally prudent way. The credit rating agencies won't look at this as a large negative, right? We will, this is, I think, again, a prudent course versus making rushed decisions that will affect next school year. I don't think we want to do that. So I just wanted to frame kind of the conversations for you. I think we've done our best to, again, throw out concepts to you that you can mull over in certain cases over the next several months. But again, we are looking for decisions in the following, you know, in the areas identified under section one here, and then we are looking for direct. And then we are looking for direction from you in Section 2. So we would like to see, right, individual decisions on each of these issues. So thank you.
Thank you. This is a mountain of work that we've been doing since January? Okay. So we've had great discussion all along the way. Before we go to public comment, I do just want to make sure that trustee Phoenix, do you have anything to share right now? Otherwise, we'll go to public comment.
No, due to kind of constraints, I agree with the colleagues and the recommendation.
Very good. JJ, who do we have with us today?
Pablo Navaduran.
Welcome, Mr. Navaduran.
Hello, hello, guys. My name is Pablo Navaduran. And I will, I will approve the superintendent recommendation for this and all those school board, any feedbacks whatsoever for, you know, for the athletics. I do approve that. And then for debate team, we got, we have revisit for that because who want to, who go pay the full cost when you travel like one trip per years? One, two per years, you know, athletics, travel a lot. Usually go world game, that's not the league game, but tournament, and then regional tournament and state tournaments as well. So as a post-school police, I do agree, like middle school, high school side, you know, fear school, all kinds of stuff, I do agree. But what I'm most triggered is, how about Worcester, Weenow, McQueen, Norvalley? Where they're going to fear school? Because Worcester, you know, now Pine, Vaughn, they're close each other. I do agree, swapping a turn point. They also close, Bear Hills, Creighton, they're so close. O'Brien, Colby, they also close their fear to their high school, you know? And how about the high school, Weenow, Worcester, McQueen, and Norvalley? How about that? So I know Pine, but close in next school year, but we talked about this school year. So if, you know, what happened, you know, if we talk about the two-year term, if Pine closes, where the officer, Pine, Vaughn, where they go, where they go? So that big, my basic guess, so thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Navaduran.
Kaylin Evans.
Welcome, President Evans.
Don't start me yet, JJ. I got a lot to, lot to get through here on the record. Okay, all right. Hi, for the record, my name is Kaylin Evans, president of the Washoe Education Association. Just really appreciate the discussion around class size, around special education. You guys hear it as much as I do, how important it is that we do whatever we can to wrap our hands around the fact that we have the largest class sizes in the country and the impact that that has, not only on the learning conditions of our students, but the working conditions of our staff. Real, sorry. The threshold from 10 to 7, fully support that measure. I would say even, when we look at the mid-year allocation, I know President Smith, you've really championed that. There are times where we need those mid-year allocations. I would even push that the more that we can be more proactive on the front end around that, the better in terms of even trying to lower that threshold below 7. Mid-year allocations are absolutely important in certain circumstances. They are very impactful on families and students. We understand that, right? Changing at the, you know, mid-year. But if we could, if we can lower that threshold and be even more or less conservative, right? If there's fundings to push over and get those allocations earlier and earlier, they're going to be able to help us be able to better fill those. So I would just really push on that. I will also say too, when we talk about leveling out, the two biggest grade levels that we hear about at the elementary, and it's across the board, is kinder and fifth, right? Kindergarten and fifth grade, I mean, you could wrap fourth grade in there. I think the, the studies really show the percentages really were kinder and fifth were where we had the largest impact in terms of being able to move the needle on student achievement. That doesn't surprise me at all, because in everybody we talked to, kinder and fifth are really the two grade levels that are hit the hardest. When you think about taking the special education, factoring that in fully, that would indirect, not indirect, directly also support fifth grade, because by that time, you're having students that are being identified throughout the elementary grade level. So by the time they're getting into fifth grade, a lot of times they're being identified, those kids, as we know all now, that aren't being currently counted. So you would see an even greater support in the fifth grade level by, by doing that. So if you leveled it off and did the special education, we would see that in the fourth and fifth grade levels especially. Sorry, there was a lot that we were trying to get on the record here. We did quickly go over a slide with aids and assistance. Again, understand that's not our bargaining unit, but they, they so drastically impact our folks. I would say out of all of those, the one-on-one special education aids are the biggest need in all capacity, not only for student achievement, but really just for the health and well-being of the certified special education teachers in those classrooms. When they do not have a one-on-one aid, the whole classroom doesn't function. So, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. I know there is, there's a lot, there's a lot. So I appreciate that. Thank you, President Evans.
The board received emails from Kathy Gage and Nate regarding the budget.
All right, team. So we're gonna, JJ, if you wouldn't mind taking us up to the first recommendation, which I believe was school police. While you pull that up, and we're going to start going through them. I'll walk everybody through every single one, what action or inaction would result in. And I'm going to turn it over to our chief legal counsel, who's going to provide an overview of this part.
Well, actually, I just want to make sure, Mark, that we meet the goals of the finance department with the motions. You probably saw President Smith and I talking, trying to make sure we get this right for you. So if I understand correctly, you'd like the board to go through each item, make a recommendation on each item. They're kind of done in two buckets, as it is on the agenda. And then we'll come back with it, because this is a little unusual from the past. We'll come back next meeting with a final budget vote. So we don't need a blanket vote today, is that correct? Okay. And so trustees, what we'll do is President Smith, as she just said, she'll walk you through each of the, however many items that are here on the agenda. I think it's about 11, it looks like. And then we'll take an action on each one of those. And then that'll go to the finance team. The finance team will come back with a final budget at the next budget meeting. Any questions on that?
Just for one point of clarification. For example, looking at the fourth and fifth grade and one and two-star schools, in that situation, we wouldn't need to make an action, because we would just leave something status quo. If something is ending or something is just continuing, we don't have to take the action on it.
I think that's correct, unless Mark would like further guidance, because we could take a no vote if that would be.
Yeah, we could take a confirmation vote, or we could just leave it.
Yeah, thinking about it, I think a confirmation vote, if we are going to cease that pilot program, I think, just for clarity of everyone, would be helpful.
You got it.
Thanks.
All right. So we'll get started, and we'll start with, and just so the team knows, we've done this so, so many times that now we're down to some nitty-gritty. And you can see staff's given us several options in some of these cases. And we can still do something different, like in the case of athletic fees, when we get to that. So, all right, so we have the recommendation here for the change in school police. And so I would be looking for a motion to adopt the staff recommendations for the four school police positions.
Sure, I'll make that motion. Do you want me to spell it out?
So moved.
Or you could say so moved.
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
All right. Seeing no lights on. JJ, for this part, would it, I'm sorry, JJ, would it be possible, just so that the community can see trustee Phoenix for the votes, or we can hear him? I just want to make sure we've got a clean record on him. Oh, he can't turn his camera on. That's completely okay.
We should be able to hear him.
Okay. All right, seeing no lights on, or hands up, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? All right, motion carries, seven to zero. Trustee Phoenix, did we get, did we hear from you on that one? I just want to make sure.
Uh, yeah, yes. And I put my thumb up, if that helps.
Okay, yeah, we can't see it, because we've got the presentation up. So just so you know, that's why I don't have a visual on the, the hands. All right. And so we will move on now to concurrent enrollment fees. So this depends on the pleasure of the board. But if we would like to continue the current approach to concurrent fees, that would mean that we just keep paying for all the classes. So a motion here, it depends on what we want to do. A motion here could look like adopting one of the proposals, or we can just take a motion to continue the program as it exists today.
President Smith, would it also be an option to explore the idea further as well?
Well, I think we can always explore the idea. So what we would do today is decide how we want to handle it in this area now, but we could always explore it. And right now, we have to decide, do we want to make one of the three changes, which is the change we have here, or the two that I asked for? Or do we want to leave it the way that it is? We can always revisit things in the future.
Diane Nicolet here. I would have to ask Superintendent Ernst to clarify a little more your thinking on that, because you're very hands-on, and you understand the nuances.
Thank you, Dr. Nicolet. I think as we explore our concurrent enrollment, we partner with some of our higher ed institutions. And we're grateful for that partnership and the benefits that it brings to our students. And in the same spirit of collaboration, we would like to make sure that we have conversations with them and are able to talk with them a little bit about our thinking. While we recognize the extent of our role in this, I just think that these partnerships with higher ed institutions are important. And as Mr. Mathers has said, there are a lot of work has been done in four months. And we haven't always been able to make all of this connective communication at the levels that we would like, based on the speed of which we're working. So the, really, the comment is just about, we can move forward with the various options and recognize that we could always explore it more. It really comes from the spirit of collaboration and wanting to work with our higher ed institutions.
And now is it time to ask a question? Yes, thank you. So depending on how this goes, I'm looking at our finance experts. The concurrent enrollment fees, the estimated savings, if we move forward with the suggested strategy, would be $259,000. So then we would, at this point, not need to roll that into a budget adjustment, because this really is looking at '26, '27 budget. Things would just stay as is while we continue the research.
Yes, this wouldn't affect the '26 budget.
So it sounds like there's no action that needs.
Well, so because it was agendaized, we do want, so in this case, a motion could look like, I move that the board maintains the concurrent enrollment program as is, and just leave it at that.
Did you want to chime in?
Well, I wanted to add on to what, sorry, thank you, trustee, President Smith. Okay, so adding on to what Dr. Nicolet just said, I think I'm getting a feeling here. So if we were to make the decision to cut back on it and also give some room to staff and leadership to explore more, there's always a chance we could bring it back. It would be like, bonus, yay, we don't have to cut it. But I think what you're saying is, we need to make a decision so that there can be a plan for schools for the year after. Is that, that's where I'm hearing.
Yes, that is exactly correct. And we actually have three options. We have the one on the screen, and then we have the two in the Board of Trustees questions.
Yes.
Which are no cost for free and reduced lunch, and one free course, and then a 50% discount, or no cost for free and reduced lunch, one free course, and then no additional discounts. We have three options to choose from. Or the fourth is that we just maintain the program as it is. But we do have to decide now.
Okay, wait, can, sorry, can we repeat all those again?
Sure. Do you have the?
I, yeah, I think so, but.
So we've got, and that doesn't mean we can't do something else. But the three that we have spelled out with numbers are the one that we see here, which is free and reduced lunch, students have no cost. Nobody else gets any free courses, but they would get a 50% discount on their first enrollment. There'd be no other discounts beyond that. So nobody gets any more free courses. The most you would get is one 50% discount off of a single course, no other discounts. The other options are, again, no cost for free and reduced lunch. Students, one course free per semester for everyone else, and then a 50% off discount for all future, or all additional, I should say. And then the third option is, again, no cost for students who are free and reduced lunch. The first course free for all other students per semester, and then no discount for additional classes. So everyone would get one free, and then they would bear the full costs beyond their one free per semester.
And remind me of the cost per credit? Because I.
I don't know the cost per credit, but I know in that second scenario, the savings would be $70,000. And then for the third one, it's $141,000 for the savings, which I know is not what you asked. And there's Dr. Parks.
Phone a friend, thank you.
Good afternoon. For the record, Troy Parks, it is raising to $100 per concurrent enrollment credit next year. And we have a schedule that includes additional costs each year thereafter. So it's going to continue to rise. And if we offer this, we're going to continue to see students enroll in those courses.
So per credit, so if it's a three-credit course, like PoliSci 101, it's a $300 charge?
No, it is a straight $100.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. That's helpful, thank you.
Might I suggest a fourth, although I think I lost track of the number?
There is four, actually.
Five, five. I have a family of five, that's my lucky number. Might I suggest another option would be to continue to research the direction that we want to go with this? And I might suggest that we, when we revisit this, maybe by October or November, that we make a decision then with the, with the information that our superintendent wants us to look at, vetting a little more our partner info, and then being able to have time for '26, '27 families and students and teachers to prepare for what might happen. So basically, we're leaving things the way they are for '25, '26, and continuing to vet, to research possibilities and what it means.
Yeah, it's like a 4B, actually, because it would be keeping the program as it is and rolling it into the larger budgetary discussions we are already planning for this fall. It's like a 4B. I'm just making it up. Vice President Mayberry.
No, I was going to say the same thing. She stole the words right out of my mouth. I mean, but projections can change, so if that's a motion, I'll second that.
Yeah, that's a motion.
All right, so we have, well, hold on, we got, we got to clear it up.
I like what you said, though, Beth.
I'm hearing, and if you like this, then we'll get like a so moved, that the Board of Trustees moves to maintain the current enrollment program as is and to bring it forward in the larger budgetary conversations planned to take place in the fall.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Seeing no lights on. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 I like the deliberateness of that aye, trustee Phoenix. All right, all those opposed, nay? Motion carries, thank you so much, colleagues. All right, so now we'll move on to the athletic transportation fees. Oh, sorry, did I miss one? Oh. Oh. Oh, okay, sorry, I jumped ahead there. So I have to go back? Oh, yes, that's right, we completely skipped over that. Thank you so much for that. Okay. So a motion on this one would look like, like I move that the Board of Trustees adopts the superintendent's recommendations related to parent-teacher home visit costs.
So moved.
It's the same program.
If you could combine them in. If you could combine them and reference the one-time cost savings too, that'd be great.
Yeah, because the fifth grade and post-graduation plans are not part of the...
Very good.
So they're strategic. Sorry. Sorry. I thought I grabbed it.
That's a very, that's a very good catch. Would you like that, while you are volunteering yourself?
Sure.
Would you like to make a quick blanket motion that just has both of those in there?
Sure. I move to approve the superintendent's budget proposals related to the strategic plan for cost savings in the one-time costs with the success plans and post-graduation plans and the parent-teacher home visit.
A second.
Did I get it?
We're doing it. All right, we have a motion by trustee Hall. We have a second by clerk Woodley. Seeing no lights on or hands up, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, nay? All right, motion carries seven to zero. We already did concurrent enrollment, so we'll skip down that. Now we're down to athletic fees. And so, again, we have options here or we could choose our own. Again, normally, I don't make motions, but I'm happy to. But I think a straight 50% and just have it be $15.75 is a lot better than getting people messed into quarters personally.
I agree. What change?
Would you like to make a motion to make the adjustment to 50%?
Yes, I move to approve the recommendation with a slight change in the increase from 45% to a flat 50%.
Second.
All right. Seeing no lights on for discussion on the motion, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, nay? Motion carries. Now we will move on to the additional levels of review. So, Mr. Rimbardo, would we also, we'll also take a motion to adopt the superintendent's recommendations for the review of non-school-based vacant positions and the continued reviews of renewing contracts? Just as simple as that.
So moved.
All right. So we have a motion by clerk Woodley. We have a second by trustee Nicolet to adopt the superintendent's recommendation for the review of non-school-based vacant positions and the continued review of renewing contracts. Seeing no lights on, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? All right, motion carries. And then now we'll move on to the additional items that we have here for the allocation process change. This is item number one. So a motion here could look like I move that the Board of Trustees adopts the superintendent's recommendations related to changing the current parameter of 10 students over the trigger point to a new allocation to seven students over the trigger point. And staff will review enrollment every two weeks, starting in October through the end of November for mid-year allocations.
Okay.
You look like you were going to do it.
Sorry. So moved.
I second.
All right. So we have a motion by Vice President Mayberry and a second by trustee Westlake. Dr. Nicolet?
JJ, would you please read that motion for me? Thank you.
The Board of Trustees adopts the superintendent's recommendations related to changing the current parameter of 10 students over the trigger point for a new allocation to seven students over the trigger point. And that staff will review enrollment every two weeks, starting in October through the end of November, in order to increase the frequency of mid-year allocation reviews.
Thank you.
All right, very good. Seeing no other lights on, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay? All right, motion carries seven to zero. And then moving on to item two, allocation for self-contained students. So do we have to take a motion on this if we're just not, I mean, because in the past, we have not, in these areas, we haven't had to necessarily vote down, but we do? Okay, we would?
No, no, I was nodding, listening, sorry.
It's okay.
Yeah.
So we could skip over any of the trustee requests that we're not going to enact and just take actions on the ones that we would or where there's a staff recommendation?
Yes.
Okay.
I think that's fine.
All right. Oh, okay, you jumped, okay, so good. So I don't see any interest in the two. So now we'll look at the superintendent's recommendation for other class size options. Hold on. I think we, hold on one sec. Before we jump down to options, I think we do need to take a vote on the pilot for other class size options. It's slide 26. Perfect, thank you so much, JJ. So we would need a vote in the affirmative to discontinue the pilot program for preserving allocations at one and two star schools. And remember, this was already just a one-time pilot, so we have to decide if we were to continue this pilot, it would need to be general funded, that would increase the deficit, or we conclude the pilot, which was a one-year pilot to begin with.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to conclude the pilot.
Could you say to conclude the pilot with preserving allocations at one and two star schools, just so that we have that? Okay.
To conclude the pilot while preserving the allocations?
No, it would be, sorry, this would be to discontinue the pilot program of preserving allocations at one and two star schools.
Exactly. I move to approve the discontinuance of the allocations at one and two star schools.
I was, I was going to...
Everyone's just like looking around.
Yeah, everyone's like, who's going to jump in? And I would have seconded as well.
No, that's okay.
So just so that everybody understands the motion by clerk Woodley, that we have a second by trustee Hall, what we are doing here is just discontinuing the one-year pilot program that preserved the allocations at one and two star schools, which already was not general fund budgeted.
I guess it's a term, it's a terminology for me, so just, you know, if I need to ignore it, that's fine. We're really not discontinuing it, we're just letting it die a natural death. I mean, does the word really matter? Tell me if it doesn't and I'll be quiet.
I don't know that the word matters, but I do know that staff has said that they want a clean vote, that we would conclude the pilot.
Conclude.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Can we still have discussion or no?
On the motion, we can. But I'm just going to preface this. This was coming out of our contingency fund, so to continue it means it has to be general fund budgeted.
Three million.
Yeah, $3 million. And I'm really glad we tried it. And it sounds like, you know, we'll have other votes later about preserving other class size reductions.
Smoothing. The smoothing thing will come later?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that was what I was going to add, is that we have several other items to smooth out and we just voted to reduce that trigger to seven. So I think that is, I just wanted to add, I think that's why it's really important that we smooth that out district-wide for clarity's sake.
Very good. All right, seeing no other lights on, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, nay? All right, motion carries. Now we have, again, option three, other class size options. This would be a vote to continue the current class size reduction in one and two star schools. Because we would need a vote to continue or is that, yeah?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. So in this case, we need a vote. This, and as a reminder, this is what we voted on previously that we have implemented. It is general fund budgeted, which means it's already planned for next year. And this is the program that specifically helps bring down class sizes in fourth and fifth grade for one and two star schools. And we already have this general fund budgeted, so there is no impact whatsoever because unlike the pilot, this is already set into our general fund. So a motion here could look like I move that the Board of Trustees directs the superintendent to maintain the fourth and fifth grade class size reduction in one and two star schools.
So moved.
You know, second.
All right, I'll give that to trustee Phoenix. So we have a motion by trustee Hall. We have a second by trustee Phoenix. Seeing no lights on for discussion on the motion, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All right, motion carries. And then that brings us down now to, again, staying in the section of options to level K3 class sizes. Remember, this is not an action to implement. The motion here would be I move that the Board of Trustees directs the superintendent to continue the analysis and engagement of stakeholders for options to level K3 class sizes.
Do we have to pick a specific one?
I, if that's a motion, I second.
You're gonna, you're going to...
I own it. Love it.
Yeah, you're going to be so moved because you're first.
So moved. I am moved.
Okay.
All right, who's my second? I have, I definitely have Dr. Nicolet as my first and...
I'll second.
Okay, and we have a second by Vice President Mayberry. I will, just for the point of clarification in the discussion period, all we are doing is we are moving the superintendent engage in these conversations with the stakeholders and to analyze these options, okay? So we're not choosing one, we're authorizing him to continue these conversations. Okay. Seeing no other lights on for discussion on the motion, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All right, all those opposed, nay? All right, motion carries seven to zero. Thank you so much. Now, Mr. Rimbardo, for aides and assistants, because these are analyses that we may not be acting on, we can just leave them be, okay? Because they're not, okay? So if anyone were to want to jump in and make any of those motions, you can. Otherwise, we're just going to leave them as they are. These are not funded.
I think so.
So we'll just go ahead and move past this. And I think we're done.
I think so.
Okay, so just as a reminder, we are not going to be doing a blanket motion because in order for us to file this amended budget, this is considered done, but in order to actually file it with the state, we will be voting on that administratively in our next meeting, but effectively for the public and all those watching, the work is done for this year. So we will not need to take a blanket motion on that, but we will absolutely say that this has been a Herculean effort. I am so proud. I have never seen a conversation in a government entity where we had this much of a budget that suddenly became higher in the process go as well as this has. And so I realize I'm biased because I think we do a great job, but this is a masterclass in how you go through budgetary decisions.
Sorry, President Smith, on the motion on the agenda, five says reducing the end fund balance, do we need to vote on that?
Do we have that? I didn't see that as one of the options, but you're right, I do see it in slide 37.
Do we, do we need to or not? I just, it was on the original, like, big blanket motion.
You're totally right about that. No, because we're not actually touching it, so we can just leave it be?
I think the decisions you've made right now will indicate, that indicates we will use the fund balance and we'll bring that back. You'll see that in our materials for next meeting. Yes.
All right, very good.
Want to make sure on the, and we'll have an exact amount?
We will. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mathers, I know we're close to concluding this. I'm curious, though, if you could, I wanted to ask you this earlier in the conversation. Are there some projections that we've made that may be, that may be high, that may be off? I mean, is there a chance that we could, we could see, you know, a greater ending fund balance as we go through this year as we have in years past? Does anything come to mind?
You mean...
Not to put you on the spot, but, yeah. I am.
Yeah. You mean, you mean for the current fiscal year '25?
For the new fiscal year.
They're really, because, again, 99% of our revenues come from the state and these are, these are locked-in numbers, these were in a bill that was passed and signed by the governor. From a revenue standpoint, there really is, there really is not a lot of fluctuation. Local revenues could go up or down somewhat, but in terms of the 600-plus million-dollar budget, you know, we won't see fluctuation, with the exception of enrollment.
Yeah.
Right? If enrollment is better or worse than what's projected for fiscal year '26, that's where you'll get the fluctuation.
What about the current fiscal year?
The current fiscal year, there is absolutely some chance that we'll end up better than budgeted. We've seen, for example, higher investment earnings than we budget because the feds kept rates elevated. So we may be slightly to the good for fiscal year '25. And that would, if your question is, would that mitigate the fund balance we're taking here? It absolutely would. That's a great point you make.
Yeah. No, thank you. And just to echo what President Smith said, thank you for all the work. This is, and all to all of my colleagues, I'm continuing to be proud and the superintendent for the work that you do. And this is a lot, you know, particularly for, in many cases, the layman behind this dais. So thank you for teaching and educating us, no pun intended there. But this is a real heavy lift and thank you. Thank you for your leadership, President Smith, on getting us through this.
I really appreciate that so much. I really do. That means a lot. We worked really hard together as a team with this and I appreciate the level of ownership that the seven of us have taken, the partnership that Superintendent Ernst and the team have really shown us. And even in difficult financial situations, our team has still found a way to move forward on some of the most pressing issues that we hear from our educators, our families and our students. So thank you so much. And with that, that closes item 2.01 and section two in its entirety. And we'll move on now to section three, our closing items, starting with item 3.01, our closing public comment.
The board received an email from Susan Bugajewski.
All right, so that closes item 3.01 and brings us now to 3.02, adjournment at 1:17 PM. Thank you all so much.